Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wednesday, December 19th, 2018, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Lucas Steele.
Here.
Michael Gordon. Doug Hardy. Susanna Ballard. John Kandig.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Donald Bergen. And Danny White.
Seeing as that we do not have a quorum, right off the bat, Mr. White, if you'd come and join us. Okay, minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, deletions, corrections, anything like that by the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, we will, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Still and seconded by Mr. McGowan to approve. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Correspondence and announcements, Mr. Schmeling.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last city council meeting, the city council ultimately ended up, after a lot of discussion, denying the application for a planned development rezoning on Park Avenue, four to two. That's the one that included the car wash. And that's all I have.
I have a question for you about that. What is the status at this point? Is it done? Can they come back before the board again? What's the disposition?
The code says that you cannot submit the identical application for 180 days. So if they decide that they want to come back and try again with the same exact application, can't do it for six months. However, if there's latitude in there with regard to staff reviewing that, a second submittal, so if there's a change to that submittal, they could bring it in tomorrow and go move forward.
For instance, what constitutes a change?
Well, the code's not very clear on that, but I would suggest that if they propose a car wash in the same location without any, I mean, the fact that it's a planned development, if they changed the location of the building, if they changed the landscaping, if they changed the height, for example, I would consider that a different application, because those are all things that could potentially impact someone's.
Material aspects.
Correct. Someone that, I mean, those are all aspects of the development that could change how someone would feel or vote on that particular item.
Okay, just for my own edification, that's all. And that was all you had?
Correct.
Okay, let's jump into the meeting here. Let me first state that this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 19-1865. It's a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for absolute boat and RV storage, 1600 Corona Drive, creating 51 condominium units. Mr. Schmeling, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property at 1600 Corona is on the west side of the highway here near or off of Countryshire Avenue. It's immediate, the property's just about two acres in size, adjacent to the new Culvers, if that helps anybody. Property's currently vacant. Pretty straightforward, they are proposing a simple RV storage, and they're asking for a preliminary plat so they can condo those units and simply sell them instead of renting them. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Anybody? Mr. Nelson, were you? Okay. All right, then let's go to the applicant. Is the applicant here? Would you like to make a presentation, come to the podium, and state your name for the record?
Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. Morning commissioners and chair. Like Stu said, this is just changing this unit over from a rental to capable of selling the units, and I'm here if the commission has any questions.
Any questions of the applicant commissioners? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the podium to anybody of the public that wishes to speak either for or against this item. Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff finds the proposed preliminary plat meets all the requirements set forth in Title 13 subdivisions. Therefore, based on those findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 19-1865 be approved, approving the preliminary plat for absolute boat and RV storage, creating 51 condominium units.
Okay, and I assume that that is acceptable for the applicant. All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, commissioners. Anybody?
I will make a motion.
Mr. Still.
Give me one minute, please.
Are you making a motion?
I am making a motion.
Okay, let me withdraw my motion then. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chad. I move to approve Land Use Action ID 19-1865, approving a preliminary plat for absolute boat and RV storage condominiums.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Still. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And we have a second by Mr. Nelson. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, let's call for the question.
Motion passes five to zero.
Congratulations. All right, the second item on today's agenda is ID dash, excuse me, ID 19-1864. It's a request to rezone assessor's parcel number 115-07-078A. It's 850 London Bridge Road from AP Agricultural Preservation District to L1, which is Limited Industrial District. Mr. Schmeling, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property is located along London Bridge Road, along the waterfront, actually at the corner of Dover and London Bridge Road. This is one of those parcels that I would suggest is probably a forgotten little sliver of property. The adjacent property is obviously developed as a storage unit complex. This portion, this front portion of the property has always been a part of that, let's call it the seven acre adjacent developed site. It was used as open storage, as you can see here in the aerial photo. If you look at the zoning map, all of the adjacent zoning is light industrial. This particular piece of property happens to be zoned agricultural preservation, probably not the most appropriate zoning classification. They've come in to expand the existing storage unit facility by placing a building on this property as well. It was determined at that time that they should probably go through the rezoning process since they plan on developing the entire site as one. The light industrial zoning district is the most appropriate, obviously, in this case. And therefore, we are recommending that it be rezoned to LI. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions of staff by commissioners? Mr. Still.
Stu, this is interesting. Was that previously a state land piece, or why would that be, that there would ever be two zonings on one ownership?
You know, I don't know the history behind the property. I don't know if it was always owned by the same individual, or if it was just a different piece of property that was encroached upon, or how it came to be. We noticed that as well, that there were not right-of-way designated nor for Dover, nor for London Bridge Road, which we had to take care of some of those things. And also, there's a huge gas easement that runs right through the middle of that property. So, I mean, a lot of complicated features to that property, that could be part of the reason why it was never rezoned, or never developed, or anything. And at this point, someone just decided to accept that challenge and try to maximize the industrial development, or the storage unit development that's on the adjacent property.
So, is there other examples along London Bridge Road where we have light industrial abutting that close? Because I see that right just north of it, there's a kind of a buffer between the light industrial and the actual road itself. And is there, it does appear now that London Bridge has a right-of-way access large enough to make that appropriate with the setbacks that you're going to have for light industrial, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And most, most of the property, well, I could almost say all of the property west of London Bridge Road, which is open space, is all zoned agricultural preservation. But anything on the east side of London Bridge Road, you're right. It appears that what they did is they followed the section line here with the zoning. That may or may not be appropriate. Some of the properties on the east side of London Bridge Road are held by state trust. So until those are developed, or come forward for development, we'll leave them as the AP zoning designation.
So just to be clear, and my only concern is that, and I know that there's properties that are pretty close to London Bridge Road that are developed closer to Windsor, closer to industrial. I can think of a couple of those. But just to make sure we're not putting something new right up against the road that hasn't been introduced via zoning, there are some other stuff up. I think by industrial, that's right up against the road, certainly, certainly the state land piece that has the storage right there, that's, that would be similar to those, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, may or may not be able to answer them. Luke kind of mentioned it, was there a lease on this? Was that state land? Was maybe the former owner of the property, or the owner, late owner?
You know, I didn't look into the history on this thing. Maybe the applicant or the owner could answer that question. All I know is that, I mean, since I've been here, which turns out it's been a little while now, that property has always just been an open storage yard. So I don't know if they obtained it later, if it was part of the original development and just chose not to do anything on it. It's difficult to tell.
So you don't know what the ownership is, whether it's a lease, or fee simple, or anything like that?
Do not, do not know.
Okay. And the property across London Bridge Road, is that state land? Or is that private?
Let me see if I can tell by the use. I believe that is, it might be state parks.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all, those are all the questions I have. Anybody else? Mr. Nelson?
That, is that a southwest gas easement that's through there?
I don't know what company, but I just know it's a, it's a.
It's a 50-foot easement, isn't it?
It's a transmission line, I think it's El Paso.
So, okay, but they've already built over the top of it?
Well.
Or paved over the top of it?
In this case, it's my understanding, based on the site plan, that the easement runs right along this section line, somewhere near that section line. They're proposing a building out in this location. Obviously, the gas company isn't going to let them build on top of the gas line. So they're working that out with the gas line. It's somewhere near that yellow line, let's just say.
Any other questions by commissioners? All right, is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward and make a presentation? Please state your name for the record. You're on.
John Stevenson, I'm with Clear Sky Capital. Good morning commissioners, I'm just here, if there are any questions or...
Could you answer the question as to ownership on that property?
Fee simple. It has been since the records that we could find, the previous owner as well. Yeah, we couldn't find anything that it was a lease, or anything previous to that.
It was just split by that easement, that's all?
That's it. We did find a 1923 gas line easement, that was the only right-of-way easement that was on that gas line, to the right of that yellow line.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
I have a question, so right now.
Mr. Nelson?
Right now, that's open storage, which typically is just fencing and you park stuff there. If someone were to build a new storage complex, there's landscaping and wall requirements and things like that, is that in the plans of what you're going to be doing?
It is, and that was a good question. That was actually the intent, was to beautify the visibility, the drive-by visibility. So the landscaping is fairly expansive, and what we think is very attractive and appropriate to the area. The bank just wouldn't give us any money for $100,000 in landscaping for that corner, to just make it really nice. Right now, it's a pretty junky-looking fence, the drive-by's pretty bad. So it was a lot easier to say, well, what if we build an 8,000-square-foot building and then landscape, really make it beautiful around that corner? It was a lot easier to get that approved.
Okay, thank you.
What would be the purpose of the building?
Just, it's six additional storage spaces, so it's not very big.
Super.
It was really an intent to beautify the front of the building, to make it more appealing in the landscape.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. All right, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, either way whatsoever, now is the time to do so. Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Once again, Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. I can answer some of your guys' questions, and I've got to have some history on this piece of property. That sliver was sold to one of the prior owners by State Lands back in 86.
86?
Yeah, so it went fee simple back in 86. I don't know if there was a lease prior, but it did go fee simple, I believe in, it was mid-'80s. I think it was 86 when State sold it over to the prior owners.
So hence the division in the zoning?
Yes, yeah. If you go up London Bridge a little bit further, where they built the other storage units, all that was sold also from State, when the city redid a couple of subdivisions up there. So on the east sides, the State has sold off a couple of those to the adjoining developers and let them divide them.
You're talking the ones immediately to the right of this?
No, if you go up a little bit in between here and Vista del Lago.
Oh, I see.
Where those two or three storage units are.
Yes.
Out front, out through there, was all State Lands too. And they sold that over to, I think the city might have actually been involved in that one, because there was a re-subdivision on that, that was called like Blue Water Subdivision or something, and all that was done. And this was done at the same time.
Okay. Appreciate the input.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions of the speaker? Okay, we're still a public hearing, so if there's anybody else who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff finds that the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in the development code. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 19-1864 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval, rezoning APN 115-07-078A, 850 London Bridge Road from AP Agricultural Preservation to LI Light Industrial.
Okay, we are at the table. Commissioners, either a discussion and/or a motion. Anybody? Mr. Nelson?
I'll make a motion to approve ID 19-1864, a request to rezone APN 115-07-078A, 850 London Bridge Road from AP Agricultural Preservation District to LI Light Industrial District.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson, a second by Mr. Still, to approve 19-1864 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes. Okay, the motion has passed, five to zero. Congratulations. The next item on today's agenda is ID 19-1863. This is a request to amend the parking and common master plan for track 2257, block 10, on Maricopa Drive, by removing lots 11 through 14 to allow for a car wash in the C-GD, which is Commercial Southgate District area of the city. Mr. Schmeling, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, as well as the following item, both deal with the same property. So more than likely, we're going to end up expanding our discussion to include both items, but we'll still vote on each item individually.
Okay, should I announce the second item then?
Sure.
Okay. The combined item, which we will vote on separately, is the, the other item is ID number 191866, a follow-up to 1863. It's a request to approve conditional use permit 19-0030001, to allow a drive-through car wash at track 2257, block 10, lots 11 through 14, Maricopa Avenue, in the Commercial Southgate District. Mr. Schmeling, your presentation on both.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property, as you indicated, the properties are on the south side of town on Maricopa, between Arapahoe and Oregrande. You had a similar request in the same block at your last meeting with regard to parking and common. The four subject properties are 50 by 250, just the traditional narrow, deep, deep commercial lots, as we see all along Maricopa and Sweetwater as well. You may remember this same image was used in your last meeting. This property right here asked to be removed from the same master parking and common plan. Here are the four parcels, here's what the parking and common is supposed to look like. We've had several parcels in this area here already remove themselves and/or amend the parking and common. One of note is the Dairy Queen as well, the configuration has changed a little bit, however, the parking and common still remains on that property. Let's go back. We have a veterinary clinic in this location that was developed several years ago, and obviously by, you can see by the striping, is not in conformance at this time with parking and common, however, still within parking and common. We have an old bar in this location that is not striped as well. Couple of vacant lots in between, and actually, there's a little city parcel in there as well, a little 20-foot strip, which we can anticipate, most of these lots are pretty much level with one another. We anticipate that this area right here will and can successfully function as parking and common. Between the veterinary clinic and these lots that are being proposed for elimination, there's a couple of feet of drop, maybe two and a half feet-ish. I didn't get out there and measure anything, but I know that there's a, there's a two-to-one slope right now between these two properties. The corner lot, which are still in parking and common, typically, or traditionally, ultimately end up getting removed from parking and common. I don't know that that's going to be the case necessarily in this one, however, because the same person owns the last three lots here, I would suggest that those should be able to provide their own parking. Therefore, our recommendation was to remove this, these four lots from parking and common. Now, the applicant is also proposing, as you indicated in our next agenda item, requesting a conditional use permit for a car wash, which is a use that is only allowed conditionally within the Commercial Southgate District. So let's go to that site plan.
May I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Isn't there already a car wash?
In the block? Yes, at the far end, let's go back to that.
In the Southgate District, obviously.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't take enough of a photo here, but right here on the corner, there is a car wash within this same block on the corner.
Thank you.
On the corner of Oregrande and Maricopa. All right, so let's go back. We can talk about this now, since we introduced the two topics together. But this is the proposed site plan. You can see the main access is off of Maricopa. We have the traditional pattern, which obviously would conflict with the traffic pattern of a parking and common, therefore, the request to remove. You have the vehicles in the stacking queue moving through the tunnel. They also have some bays in the rear of the property that directly access the alley. I'll let the applicant get into more of the logistics on the site, but you can see based on that site plan why the request came forward for the elimination of parking and common. That concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, any questions of staff by commissioners? Mr. Still?
Well, Stu, you did a great job of preparing for this, because there's a lot of information there. You already told us the elevation changes and anticipated everything I was going to ask you. But it all leads back to the concern we've always had, every time somebody comes to this and it's not a corner lot, our biggest concern is, does that impact adjacent property owner? In this case, the adjacent property owner, I'm just going to confirm, is the same entity.
Yes, I would have had a little more concern. I mean, we have to, we have to review these on their own merit when they come in, and obviously, they don't all come in within six months of each other, or even a year or years of each other. So we never know. So we have to look at adjacent uses. We also have to look at whether or not the grade is going to also allow the parking lots to work with one another. I mean, we have situations where parking and common, where there's, you know, four or five feet of elevation change within a few lots, which makes it very difficult to grade those parking lots. And depending on when the development occurred, they may have raised that lot, they may have lowered that lot, we never know. So every instance is, has to be judged on its own merit. One of the things that this had going for it was that it was, it was four lots. I mean, it was quite a wide area. Also, that the adjacent veterinary clinic does have elevation change, which typically is one thing that makes it difficult to accommodate that parking and common. Also, another thing it had going for it, just by chance, was that the, there's a single owner for all three of these adjacent properties. If these were owned by individuals, we probably would have had more concern that these little 50-foot lots would have difficulty developing on their own without the aid of the parking and common stretching or continuing through this property. So based on all that information, we recommended that the, that this configuration would be appropriate and that they could pull themselves on a parking and common.
And during the public notice period, the veterinarian did not object?
That is correct. We received no objection, written or verbal.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, did you have a question?
I think you answered. I was just going to confirm that... I was just going to confirm that those property owners were contiguous. The, the other thing was, obviously, this plan hasn't been through any red lines or anything like that, but according to the zoning setbacks, is the plan that we're looking at, does it meet all that criteria, or are we just looking at something that is going to have to be changed quite a bit?
It, it shouldn't, upon initial review, it shouldn't have to be changed quite a bit, however, we have not, you're correct. We have not gone through formal design review yet. We haven't approved any of the landscaping or anything yet. We've just done basically enough of a review to, to get it to this point in front of you. However, there's one other thing that you mentioned that I want to address before I forget, is that when these parking in common areas were created, they were created with the owners at that time of the entire block were involved in the, in that process, and you may remember that it requires at least seventy-five percent approval of the property owners in, in that block to even submit an application to the city to be removed from parking in common. Now, does that necessarily mean that all those owners actually understand what they're signing off on, or how well is it explained to those owners? We're not a party to that traditionally, but if the, if the application comes in and it meets the seventy-five percent minimum, we, we run it through the process, and that is supposed to suggest to us, the city, us being the city, that all the neighbors at least understand the concept of parking in common and understand that by these lots being removed, that they're not going to get to share that parking.
Could you then explain, how many?
Mr. Still.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Could you, how many people are in that group that they had to get the seventy-five percent on? Because there's seven of those lots, right?
Yes, hold on. That should be in my report. Ten, there's twelve property owners in the block. Ten of twelve, we received the, the statements from, the signed copies from, that's eighty-three percent, so they exceed the seventy.
And it's by property owners, not by individual legally described lot?
No, it's the, it's the lots, yes.
So, but there's seven of those twelve, correct?
Yes. Okay, yeah.
I have another question.
Mr. Nelson.
One thing that drives me bonkers about the Southgate District is that the business owners pretty much, you know, they, they take up the whole property, and they don't leave any parking for employees. When I look at this, can you explain to me how many parking spaces there are for employees, or, or is it going to be another business that has, you know, twelve cars parked down the alley?
I don't want to guess which parking spaces are designated, if any are designated for employees.
What's required?
I would let the applicant, I would let the applicant handle that. Like I said, there appears to be plenty of parking spaces on the property for, for a car wash for the use. I mean, there, there's several along here, double row here. Now, are those all dedicated for customers, employees, whatever? I don't know that. Applicant will probably be able to answer that better for you.
But Mr. Nelson was asking, for this type of a development, what would the parking requirements be? You don't know offhand?
Yeah, I would have to go back and look at the code.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff by the Commissioners? All right, hearing none. I'll invite the applicant to the microphone, make a presentation. Please state your name for the record.
Jeff Dadham, D-A-D-A-M. Regarding the employee parking, we do have quite a bit of room in the back of the property. The employee parking, there's four spaces in the back. A property like this is run at any given time with three to four people, and it's, and they come in shifts, three to four people come in shifts, but if you look at the bays in the back, there's, they're, they're quite large, and we use those for detailing vehicles, we use those for installing stereos and, and stuff like that in, in vehicles, doing minor work on them. So there is quite a bit of room in the back, similar to Car Toys. I own Car Toys as well, and if you've seen Car Toys have been over there, you see that there's quite a few people parked in the back, and at that location, we have twenty-five to thirty people working there. So this, there, there is plenty of parking in the back of this, and then there's seventeen spaces up front as well for any overflow or that kind of thing. Will we occasionally have people parked in the alleyway in the back? Probably, but it's not going to be seven to ten cars every day. It'll be an occasional car parked out there. Let's see, there was another question regarding the parking in common. The parking in common, I worked very closely with Jeff Bays, who's the owner of the, of the property to the side with me, and he was one of the people who signed off on this, and he and I have been talking about a, a project that's he, that he is doing, and the two, I designed this with, in mind, keeping in mind what he was working on, and we designed this to kind of connect with each other and provide, you know, easy pass-through on, on this property between the, our, my project and their project. So I think those were the two main things. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any enlightenment as to what that project might be?
He's talking about sort of a, a fast casual restaurant, something along those lines, probably with both parking, indoor seating, outdoor seating, and a drive-through.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Nelson?
I have a question. Those parking spaces up front, they indicate little black dots. Are those going to be like drying stations, or?
Those are free vacuums in the front, and what they have is, they have canopies over the top of them, and then they have double-drop hoses on each side, so you pull your car in there, and you pull the vacuum hose out, and you vacuum your own car for free after you've used the wash.
Right, which is great, but they're not parking spaces.
They're not, they, they're parking spaces. They're occasionally used for parking spaces, but they're typically used for people who come out of the wash, want to vacuum their vehicle, or they vacuum their vehicle prior to, but they are a parking space, just like you would find at a Safeway or something like that, but they do have, the, the use is intended to vacuum your vehicle.
Right, okay.
Mr. McGowan.
I have a question, sir. I'm a little confused or, or lack of knowledge. How many people on a busy car wash day does it, do you need to run the operation?
Three.
Three can run a car wash operation?
Yes, sir.
Who drives, who writes the ticket when they drive in?
They, it's all automated. When you go in now, it's like pulling up to an ATM machine. We don't do the interiors of vehicles here, we just do the exterior. The customer does their own interior work with the vacuums. So we don't have people, like at Car Toys, we don't have people at this location who will get in your vehicle and wipe the inside down and clean the inside and that kind of thing. You do that yourself here, which is why, you know, the, the, the car washes here start at three dollars and go up to about fifteen dollars.
In other words, it's another version of, I've seen a lot of gas stations that give you a car wash if you buy gas, and they have a little tunnel behind the store, and you can run your car through it. Is that basically what we're talking about?
Not necessarily. Think, think that concept, but much bigger. So this tunnel in here is a hundred and twenty feet long, and you, you're, you're on a, your car goes on and it, and it goes through the car wash on a conveyor belt, where it pulls your tire through, and it's not, like at the gas stations, they have a, maybe a fifteen or an eighteen or a foot, or a twenty-foot tunnel. A lot of times, you pull in and you just stop, and it, the machinery goes around you. Sometimes you go through it, like you said. Those typically do not have a conveyor on them, where you put your car in neutral and it pulls it through. Those are typical, they're, they're what we call a rollover. So this is a much longer process than the ones that you find at the gas station. And quite honestly, no employee will really ever touch your car. I mean, we may take your antenna off, or we may help you out with something that needs to come off, a rack or whatever it might be, but we're not physically touching your vehicle. It's all done by automated equipment these days on these types of washes.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions of the speaker?
How many, how many people will be working in each?
Mr. Nelson.
Sorry.
It's okay.
How many people, people will be working in each detail bay?
We'll typically, most likely, have two people in those, in, in the back there. You'll have probably, because we own Car Toys, a lot of stuff is done at Car Toys. There is a median being built at Car Toys that is hurting us a little bit with, with getting the trailers in and the boats and the RVs and stuff like that, but typically, we're going to have people going back and forth, because we'll do work at both locations. So a lot of the work that we'll do over there is by appointment, and at any given time, somebody back there is going to probably be two people. We would still sell all of our audio stereo stuff and have all of our, you know, backstock detail stuff done over at Car Toys on Lake Havasu Avenue, but we would have people coming from Car Toys over here to do detailing and, and audio installation and stuff like that.
Mr. McGowan.
So, this is a car wash. You, you wash cars, and I assume small trucks? You don't do RVs or boats or?
We don't do, we don't do anything other than typically passenger vehicles that, that are not oversized. So, you know, there's about a seven-foot, four-inch clearance to go through here. We don't do a duly on here, but we do those items by hand. We can do an RV, we can do a boat, we can do a duly, but we do those by hand in the back by appointment as basically part of it, it would be a detail. As far as the, the vehicles that go through in the three to five minutes, those are all passenger vehicles.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Dadham.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. I will now open it to the public. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, please come to the microphone and state your name for the record.
My name is Travis Crook. I own AZ Auto Spa, which is the car wash a few hundred yards away from this proposed site.
Okay.
I obviously have a huge concern with it being so close, the south side developing but not growing. I just don't believe that there's enough on that side of town to sustain my business and this proposed business. Been here ten years, obviously through the economy and everything else, surviving it. It's better now, but like I said, I have obviously a huge concern with it being approved via my livelihoods, basically. So, that's about all I have.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good morning, I'm Jarrett Ports. I'm the former, former owner of Car Toys Car Wash. So, Mr. Dadham approached us as a, as a buyer for Car Toys because he wanted to come to Lake Havasu, and he saw Lake Havasu as an underserved market for car washes. So, Car Toys is a facility that can handle up to eight hundred, even nine hundred cars on a day because of the facility and the, and the, the flow of the, of the systems and the equipment that's there. And so, on the south side, he also identified that it's underserved, and he went through the same process when he came to us. So, I can say that Mr. Dadham has very high-quality business practices across all of the things that he does, and when he came from Phoenix, where he has a lot of businesses and entrenched himself in Lake Havasu, he didn't go and, and buy land adjacent to Car Toys without coming to us and making us a very fair offer to, to improve and put money into that. So, when he bought that, he's, he's taken, he's putting money in Car Toys, he gave us a fair offer. He didn't put Car Wash side by side because there was need and demand. Car Toys can't physically handle its, its demand, which is why the surf-through car wash that did not pass the City Council meeting is coming. So, big companies are identifying that Lake Havasu is an underserved market. Now, while I agree that the south side isn't growing quite as fast, there's a lot of things happening, so the Riviera is a huge project, there's a lot of things that are coming to the south side, and I think that the growth is shifting. I can tell you, as a car wash owner, I have nine other car washes, and we're building a bunch all the time. Lake Havasu is an underserved market. The appropriate site for, for a high-volume car wash is on the south side, it's not on Park Avenue where, you know, we, we've, we've kind of had a, a city that builds industrial stuff close to the lake and nice stuff away from the lake. Park Avenue's not an appropriate place, in, in my opinion, I've been here twenty-five years, I went to high school here, and, and so, in my, in my opinion, the south side is an appropriate place for a high-volume car wash. This is a, a purpose-built car wash, like Mr. Dadham said, it's for passenger vehicles, it's for trucks, and it's to move high volumes of, of those, it's not to wash RVs in, in hand bays and different things like that. So, you know, I would say that knowing the car wash business and knowing that, that that is being affirmed by companies who aren't investing in Lake Havasu while Mr. Dadham is and, and not going about it the right way, they're coming out of town and they're proposing to put car washes in places that they don't understand. This is a spot where it makes sense, it'll serve that community that's growing on that south side, and it's, I can tell you from being physically on his locations in other areas, it will be state-of-the-art, it'll be, he's going to spend all the money that, that it's required, and this will be a, a product that our town doesn't normally get. Usually, we get the downsized version of something, this will be what you see in Scottsdale or, or some of the higher-end communities, so I think it'll be a good offering for our community.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the speaker?
Yeah, excuse me, I have one more question.
Mr. McGowan.
At Car Toys, don't you have a, a dollar price on a car wash, very similar to what you're going to want to put here? Don't you have one, they go through the same tunnel, I, I go there a lot, and they go through, and then that's all they do is wash the outside, and you finish it in the back? So isn't it kind of basically what you're going to put on the south side?
There, there's two, and, and I don't own Car Toys anymore, but I'm fairly familiar with it, having owned it for a period of time. There's two offerings there, there's a full service where the, the staff will clean and wipe down and, and make sure that your car is clean, and then there's a express offering that you drive through, and just the, the equipment does the, the work. Car Toys was built fifteen years ago. Now, while there are substantial improvements we did in technology, and Mr. Dadham has done since then, the technology that's in that tunnel is not what it is, what is coming out of the equipment rooms today. So, that tunnel that you see there with no human intervention will get a very clean, very dry car, and then the, the, the customers will have the option to have free vacuums, whether they wash there or not, so.
So they could just drive in and drive out in the street and leave, and never talk to anybody, see anybody, just get their car washed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Dadham. Okay, we're still in the public hearing process. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak, either pro or con? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll deal with the parking in common first. Staff finds the proposed amendment has minimal impact on the overall implementation of the adopted parking in common plan for block ten of track twenty-two fifty-seven. Therefore, based on those findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action nineteen dash eighteen sixty-three be approved, amending the parking in common master plan for track twenty-two fifty-seven, block ten, by removing lots eleven through fourteen to allow a car wash.
Okay, we are at the table for staff, or excuse me, for Commissioners' discussion and/or a motion. I'm going to start by one point of clarification. We are here today as the commission to rule on this, I shouldn't say rule on this, vote on this, based on the merits of the zoning. We don't have anything to do with judging whether or not two businesses should be side by side, that, those are market concerns, they don't affect us. So, we're here to vote on the merits only of the zoning requests before us. So having said that, we're here at the table for discussion. Mr. Still.
I'm going to add to that, and thank you for, for clarifying that. Some of the questions that we're talking about are operational-related, and that really has nothing to do with especially this first item. When we get to the CUP, maybe, Stu, I'd like your input after I get done here, but certainly, what we're concerned about here is whether or not this impacts neighbors, whether or not we need to preserve the common area of parking there, and I think staff's recommendations from my standpoint are right on, and he's taken everything into consideration, and the majority of the neighborhood is, is not objecting to it. So, I'm going to vote for this first action, and as far as the second action goes, that's a CUP, that's where we would start getting, there is some requirements for you to set a site plan, which you've done, but I'm not sure how deep we get, Stu, and this is where the question is to you, how deep do we get in the plan review process on their site plan for a CUP?
As, when you're reviewing a conditional use permit, given its title, condition, conditional, you have the ability to place additional conditions on it that you feel um, you have the ability to place additional conditions on it that you feel are warranted, whether it's operational characteristics, uh, meaning hours of operation. If you felt, for example, that the residential area adjacent uh, to the north would be impacted, you could limit the hours, let's say till 9:00 PM or something. Um, you could suggest that if, if there was, if you felt there was going to be a negative impact on the alley, for example, you could have them put a um, a separation wall, being that there's residential nor, north of the alley. You could uh, require that they enhance the landscaping if, or between this and the adjacent property uh, being the veterinary clinic um, to help buffer any impact or minimize any impacts. The, the conditions that you place on this have to have some sort of nexus to an impact though, or to an assumed or an anticipated impact. Um, you couldn't, for example, just arbitrarily place a condition on it. And, and that's part of the reason why when applicants come forward for conditional use permits, a lot of times they'll show a, a, a site plan. We have not reviewed that site plan yet. And of course, we're going to take all the city regulations into account and of course, building regulations and whatnot. So when I say we haven't reviewed that technically yet, it, it may require five parking spaces, for example, for staff. And, and I don't know that, I'm just grabbing that number. So he may have to manipulate the rear of that. So this may not look exactly like it looks for you in the picture today. You're approving the use.
Concept.
Correct.
And this, just to clarify, the city staff approves what code-related issues we need to worry about such as?
Correct, with regard to the site and the building itself, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just, we're at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Nelson.
Um, I'm gonna focus on the first land use action here and then we'll go into the second one. And I'll make a motion to approve ID 19-1863, request to amend the parking in common master plan for track 2257, block 10, Maricopa Drive, by removing lots 11 through 14 to allow for a car wash in the C-SGD, Commercial Southgate District, with staff, staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second by Mr. McGowan. To approve ID 191863 with staff recommendations. Any further discussion on this item?
The only thing that I would mention is that,
Mr. Nelson.
In order for any property that's come into the Southgate District for the past four or six years, I, I've been on here for four or six years. But in order for someone to develop, we've had to remove the parking in common or it just sits there. So it's uh, in driving by there, you know, I can confirm that the elevation changes just don't, they just don't make sense for parking in common. And that's my only additional comment.
Well, what I would say as far as discussion, parking in common originated in order to help out those properties. Because there was, being those narrow, thin lots, not a lot of room for parking. And our parking requirements restricted the development of those properties. So hence, we came up with a combined parking program many, many years ago, back in the 90s. And uh, as these properties have developed, some of them take advantage of that combined use. Uh, some do not by assembling properties and, and combining them and obtaining enough property, enough area to have their, their own standalone parking. So in this particular case, that was, that's been done and, and they haven't impacted the adjacent parking due to grade breaks and, and so forth. I, I see no problem with this myself either. So, any other discussion? All right, let's call for the question. Place your votes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, that was the first item or issue on this item. Second one is ID 191866. We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners.
My discussion on this, I still have an issue with the parking. I don't think that the vacuum station should be considered parking. And I, we don't have any control over that. That's going to be up to the um, you know, up to the building department. But the Southgate District just, everybody parks in the alleys, they park on vacant lots. It's, it's a mess over there once this gets all developed. I have a, a major concern about that. And I, and I have a question too, and maybe Jim, you can allude to it and, or Luke or Stu. But with this being a, in the permitted use table, a car wash in the Commercial Southgate District, you have to get a conditional use permit, meaning that it's not automatically permitted. So what is it that we are trying to preserve? Why is it not permitted?
It, I would suggest that a car, a car wash is one of those uses that given the size of the site or the location of the site, um, given the unique characteristics of all the drive-through lanes and everything, it could present some unique impacts potentially. Therefore, the, the concern or the condition. I, I know that um, obviously you and others have mentioned concern with regard to employee parking on that site. Um, one of the conditions that you could place on it would be that you feel that because of the, the location of the site or because of the direct access to the alley or even because you've seen the site plan, you could suggest that uh, for example, a minimum of three parking spaces be designated for employees. And, and that would be a reasonable condition. Like I said, I didn't look at the code, so I don't know how many parking spaces are, are required uh, for a car wash specifically. But obviously then, when, when we reviewed the, did the design review, we would make sure that at least three spaces were designated for employee parking.
If that condition was.
If that condition were placed on it. And, and I'm just using an arbitrary number. No one at this point has mentioned any other concern with regard to the need, let's say the need for um, extensive landscaping on either side or the front traditionally. I don't know what, what other condition that you would place on it to, to minimize an impact. But you have that, you have that ability.
So, and I guess. This can just be for open discussion with amongst us, but what are we trying to preserve?
The, the car wash.
Mr. Still.
To me, i- is a changing variable. And when we put this, these, these use tables in place and even today, water conservation is one big issue. We might have had an issue about, well, we don't want car washes coming along. They're going to waste water, so maybe we want to put restrictions on them. There's a number of different things that could have happened there, but given my background as an appraiser, I've seen a lot of these new car washes pop up. Uh, St. George, I have a good friend that's developing several of them and their membership and their tunnel, just like what these guys are doing. They are so much more efficient and they capture the peak market hours better than you can in any other way. And so it's a, it's, it's a totally different concept. And I feel really bad for the gentleman in the back that has a car wash right down the street. But it's frankly, it's outdated compared to the new technology that's out there. And that's why other national companies are looking at this. They look at the new tech, technology. They look at peak hours and what they can capture during that peak hour. They, they, the gentleman that's doing this is coming to Lake Havasu and putting investment in Lake Havasu. And the first thing that happened was he got curbs put up in front of his existing car wash. I, I don't want you, sitting in the audience, to think that we are objecting to some of these operational standpoints. Just for the record, for the discussion, I, I understand Mr. Nelson's concerns and there is a problem with um, parking in the back. But um, I've seen the, the type of operations they have and with 15 parking spots, it's going to be really hard pressed for me to believe that 15 people are really vacuuming their cars at one time, coming out of one tunnel. But um, there are some ancillary stuff and he had a really good explanation for why they would have by appointment only, I get that, when they're overflowing at their primary location and they need to fill, fill that spot. So from an economic standpoint, which is really none of my business frankly, I understand why they're doing what they're doing. But from a planning and zoning standpoint, um, why we're trying to preserve, why is that a CUP? I would suggest for the same reason that we should make every single storage unit these days a CUP. It's the only feasible thing. And now every C2 use i- is going to be looked at as a potential storage unit. And there are C2 uses that are, need to be in some of those prominent locations, such as Park Avenue, that we can't allow as a planning and zoning a C2 use there because it might become a storage unit. Okay, so there's, things change over time. Markets dictate what people do with their money. And from my standpoint, sitting on this board, I, I don't see a problem with a car wash going in there, especially one of that quality.
I don't, I don't see a problem.
Mr. Nelson.
I don't see a problem either. And, and I guess that, you know, to be more specific is, do any of you guys see a problem with preserving the Commercial Southgate District with this type of car wash going in that location? I personally, I don't. I think it's uh, my only concern is parking. But I think, I think, you know, it'll, it'll show that, you know, some of these entire sites would be developed and that people are willing to invest into these sites that are just sitting there. And that's what we need. But I don't see an issue with this. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page as, as trying to preserve something or moving forward with um, being okay with that type of, of business and, and this designation.
My personal opinion is that I don't have a problem with this development. I don't think it's really going to hinder the balance of the parking in common that is left. The Southgate District was, when it was put together, was a pretty good idea, but the development didn't take that route. And I think our job here is to accommodate or work within that change, that only constant that we have here in planning, change. So I, I think that we're in, we're well within the uh, the scope of what, what's happening out there personally.
The other, the other thing that I would like to discuss and, and I'm not, I'm not an expert in, in any way in the uh, I don't work for the building department. I don't know the parking codes. But I would assume in, in that size of a bay, you know, whether you're installing car stereos or detailing, you have a detailed bay, it looks like, and then three other bays that could be used for detail or audio installation. But I would assume you're going to have at least one per, person working, if not two, in each one of those bays. So that's potentially, you know, not three to four people there, but you know, six to, six plus working there. But I don't know the regulations on parking stalls. And so I have an issue not having someone looked at this and have in writing that, that this meets the parking requirements. Especially those parking spaces are not designed for parking spaces. They, they are part of the utility of the car wash. And that's, that's my concern.
Mr. Still.
I just think that, that we aren't approving this plan as it sits right now. That's going to be something the building department will go through and make sure that it meets code. As far as the, the parking goes, I mean, they have a, they have something there that could entice somebody to use it besides just parking if they're going in there to get their stereo done. But again, I really don't want to get into the operations of what they do. I'm going to trust that the building department has codes that satisfy that. And from my standpoint and seeing these car washes operate, that's a good amount of parking. I've never seen in that many vacuums being used at one time in any parking, in any car wash I can ever imagine, but.
So would you agree that the, that they can't serve as both?
No, not at all. I think that they will serve as both. I think you'll absolutely see, would you disagree that you'll see somebody park there not using a vacuum?
Well, I just don't see, I personally wouldn't park in a space where I thought it'd be costing the business owner business.
Unless there were no other spaces, then you'd park there.
If the business owner chooses.
Or I'd just drive by.
So you would literally drive by a parking lot that's empty because?
I, I, I wouldn't park.
Because it's.
I would not park in a vacuum spot. Because I, I think I'd be, I would be taking up someone's space to vacuum or.
Even if the whole thing was vacant, is that really, you really wouldn't sit there? I mean, every one of those is vacant, you're not going to park in one of them to go in and say?
I'm just saying, I personally wouldn't.
All right, we're kind of getting hung up on, on a detail here.
I know, I know.
If it's a concern, as Mr. Schmeling already indicated, the, the maker of the motion can specify that city staff make sure that there's dedicated parking for the couple, two or three employees that Mr. Dadam said that they were going to have.
And in my head, I wouldn't want to impose something that is unreasonable. And what you guys are saying is my thought process is unreasonable. And so I don't want to impose that on a business owner. I would, my motion would say that they can't be both. It's either has to be utility or parking.
Yeah, I, I think that's, Chad, I, I don't disagree with the employee parking. I, if I make a motion, I would make a motion that there is designated employee parking in the rear just so we don't clog up the alley.
We are at the table for a motion.
And so I think I have a good compromise that will, I think that's a good compromise. But I don't want to take away the fact that they're putting a vacuum cleaner there. Probably means that it's a larger parking stall than code even requires. I'm assuming that. But it, it.
Yeah, it's all.
Doesn't change the utility of it, people could still park there. But if they don't park there because they don't want to disturb the business owner, I, I get your point on that. But um, I, I think it's fair to, I'm going to make a motion to uh, approve as staff recommended with three designated parking spots in the back.
Is that your motion?
Well, there, it looks like there's already, how many designated parking spots are there? I think there's already three back there.
Four, right there it says four.
So.
Okay, so I'm gonna, it, it's already cleared then, so from.
Let me ask one more question, Luke. Is it possible to, is it possible to say that there cannot be employee parking in the alley?
You could, you could state that, yes. However, um, that appears where he's proposing that. And, and I will indicate that there are four spaces shown on the alley, one of which is a handicap space, so that, you know, probably not going to be designated as an employee parking space. But uh, you, I don't, it gets a little, it gets a little touchy. I think you are well within your realm if you require a certain number of spaces be designated for employees based on the statements made by the owner. I, I think you're okay there. As far as, I, I think if you get too involved, you're going to end up changing the site plan. And I don't know how that, what kind of impact that's going to have on, on the overall.
I believe that, I believe that when this goes to design review, they're going to take into account all of the code requirements. And parking is one of the code requirements. And they're going to make sure that there is enough parking there to accommodate both patronage and employees. And to specify at this point, and we're already seeing four dedicated spots in the back as parking only, one being a handicap. For us to mandate at this point, um, without having a design review by city staff might be a little premature.
Right, and I don't want to mandate anything that, you know, I, we could be, it's beyond our realm of expertise. Are you okay with the, having the applicant maybe rebut some of these comments?
Yeah, if you'd like to call the applicant to the, to the podium? Please state your name again for the record.
Jeff Dadam.
Okay.
There, there is a lot of room in the back. This is a plan that still probably needs some tweaks. Um, and exactly what you guys are saying is it, it's an important thing to talk about because where are the employees going to park? One of the things that's really important to know, we don't sell anything here except for car washes, right? So you don't go into a store, you're not going to come there, park your car and come inside. You might come inside for a few moments and, you know, talk to the manager, hey, I, I, I lost something here the other day or, you know, my son vacuumed up my keys, can we check and see if we can find him, whatever it might be. But you don't go in and purchase anything here. You're not going to go buy greeting cards, you're not going to go buy an air freshener. Uh, anything you purchase is going to be purchased in a vending machine. you purchase is gonna be purchased in a vending machine here. The only time anybody's parked there is if they are an employee, or if they're getting their vehicle vacuumed, or they have some sort of strange issue, like a vacuum, my keys up, can we go look for that in your separator? The bays in the back are extremely large, um, I own Arizona Reflections Mobile Detail as well, and we have multiple vehicles, um, right now, those vehicles sit in the back of Car Toys. There's gonna be a dedicated area for those vehicles to actually come in, park, and be locked up overnight, uh, so, as those vehicles go out every day, and we have, uh, them in the field, they're not gonna be in there, and there's not gonna be stuff that's gonna prevent you from parking, because they come in every night and they leave every morning, and so, you'll have a big, empty bay back there, uh, and, and that solves a lot of the issues that we would have if we did have a need for more parking for our employees. So, there is a tremendous amount of room to play with in the back if it does become a situation that we need to, uh, address.
Thank you, Mr. Daddam.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Still.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve item number 19-1866, approving conditional use permit 19-0030001, to allow a drive-through car wash at Track 2257, Block 10, lots 11 through 14, Maricopa Avenue in the Commercial Southgate District.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Still, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second by Mr. McGowan, to approve ID 198, excuse me, 1866 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, let's call for the question.
Mr. White.
Okay, motion passes unanimous. Good luck. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the call to the public, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the commission on any subject whatsoever, now is the time to do it, we may not respond, but we can hear your thoughts. Call to the public. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that, future meetings, Mr. Schmeling.
Um, yes, we have, uh, our next regularly scheduled meeting is January 2nd, and yes, we do have items on it, so if you know that you're not gonna be here, please let us know, 'cause I just wanna make sure we have them for.
Okay, thank you very much. Having no other business, we are adjourned.